Hello and good morning and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings reconvening. I'm Councilperson Erica Strasburger and I chair the Committee on Finance and Law. And for this hearing, we will hear from the city comptroller and her office. I'd like to ask our budget director, Peter McDevitt, to give a brief overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilperson. The city comptroller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of the city of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the comptroller to protect the city's tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. The comptroller does this by auditing all city government-related expenditures. The city also has a finance department treasurer who collects and audits all city revenues. The comptroller also conducts audits of all city departments and city authorities such as the Urban Redevelopment Authority, the Pittsburgh Parking Authority, Pittsburgh Water, and the Pittsburgh Housing Authority. Through audits of city departments and authorities, the comptroller makes recommendations on how to make those departments more efficient, effective, and how to better spend tax dollars. The office of the comptroller includes the following core services: accounting, accounts payable, performance audits, fiscal audits, and engineering. A position summary for 2026, there are 56 total full-time positions in general fund, that is one less from last year. And a summary of non-personnel changes overall, there is a $12,000 increase in non-personnel funds. Specific changes include funds moved from various budget lines to bolster funds in professional and technical services for auditing and accounting services and for a spreadsheet server. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to the comptroller. Welcome, and feel free to share any information you have with us.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us here today. I'll sort of rephrase what the council budget director said and re-articulate some of the core functions of our office. Our accounting office is, I'm joined at the table today by our deputy, acting deputy comptroller and chief accounting officer, Jamie Zala, who runs our office's accounting office. That's a core function of our office. We produce the annual, the city's annual financial report of record. We also run the city's accounts payable office. We pay the city's bills. Excuse me. We run what you often hear about when you hear about our office in the news is our auditing and our reports sections, and that is probably about a third of our staff as well. For some figures, as of November 13th, our office has executed 755 total contracts. We are a countersigner on all city agreements. As of, again, earlier this month, we've processed more than $915 million, more than 93,000 transactions. We've produced reports on the Department of Public Safety, city council, and the city clerk's office this year, the Office of Film and Event Management, city parks, P-cards. We've done a Pittsburgh Public Schools procurement practices report. We've done reports on the Housing Authority, IZ and affordable housing financing, and we have a report coming probably later this week on the state of the city's fleet. So, we intend to be informative as you all in city council are considering policy, and also to inform the mayor's office too as well as they're considering policy moving forward. And with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Jamie if you have anything, or any staffing changes you want to flag.
We've made a couple staffing changes, all budget neutral, updating how we're looking at our audit department being the largest one, but also looking through and doing that by recognizing positions that are no longer needed to move those around within to be truly budget neutral for our staffing. Also using some of that money, like was mentioned, for a slight increase for a product that we had been using for years that had been previously on IMP's budget that is now being moved over to ours. We're able to partially fund that through salaries and through removing a product that we were no longer using, and then just needing a little bit more to get us there because this is a product that is vital for creating the ACVER. Without it, probably be here till 10 o'clock every night for a whole month to redo all those statements over and over and over again. Another part of our office that is very important and has been taking on more and more responsibilities is our inspection and engineering. They review a lot of our contracts. They go onsite to verify that what the invoice says is actually matching what is happening.
And with that, I'm happy to, or you do that, sorry.
Thanks very much. We have been joined by, or we are joined by Councilman Mosley, Councilperson Sharland, and Councilman Wilson, and we'll start in the order of arrival. Councilman Mosley, is there anything that you have for the comptroller's office? Any questions?
Sure. Thank you for being here today. Thank you for your presentation. I don't have too many questions. Maybe some will come up as discussion, you know, carries on, but you know, I would be, you know, just interested, you know, in getting, you know, your perspective overall on the city finance. I know you've been putting out, you know, reports, so I think this would be a good opportunity, you know, to hear from you as well as the public would like to hear from you as well about, you know, the state of the city's finances and what are some of the challenges and what do you see looming ahead for 2026?
I will thank you again for that question because you were the first person that asked it last year. So, the one thing that we have noticed in the 2026 budget is what was reflected in your presentation by the council budget director last week and has been discussed at this table in the last, I think, couple weeks at length, is that city expenditures are deflated in the budget you are seeing that was presented, I think, on Monday of last week. I remain very concerned about expenses that we will be obligated to pay that are not in this document. And just because they are not in this document does not mean we will not have to pay them. There are things like water, the water bill. You know, we know that the water pricing is going to go up. Pittsburgh Water is before the, going before the Utility Commission, I think at some point in the next six months, and going to ask for a rate increase. Pittsburgh Water has very low rates, and they are, they're going out and asking for a rate increase primarily to handle work done to do the lead line replacement, which I view is very important, but we know our water rates are going to go up. That's inevitable, right? The bill for this year is likely to be $10 million, and if the proposed rate increases take effect, we have underbudgeted by $31 million over the course of the next five years. That alone is quite concerning to me. We have other issues with overtime, which was a thing you and I discussed last year here at this table. And again, just because it's not in the budget does not mean we will not be obligated to make those payments. These are things that we are going to have to pay. Like overtime, we are going to have to make those payments. They are going to be the first thing we pay, you know, every two weeks, and just because it's not in the budget doesn't mean we aren't going to pay it. And from my perspective, we need to start by, start these conversations by being honest with the public on where we're headed. I do think we need to demonstrate some level of, you know, tightening our belts, but at the same time, I don't know that there's enough tightening that we can do without looking at additional revenue sources, given where we are right now.
Thank you, Mr. Budget Director. Always Johnny on the spot. Yeah, so along, you know, those lines specifically just starting with the water now, is it a $10 million annual bill that we pay currently?
So, we have actually not paid the 2025 water bill, to my understanding, at all. But it was, the council budget director can chime in too. The July account was, we were up to $5 million, so.
Yeah, January through July, $5.3 million. I think it's around $8 million as of the end of October, according to our friends at Pittsburgh Water.
Okay.
So, you can extrapolate. And utility prices, I cannot think of a circumstance where water is utility, where water, where utility has gone down year over year. And we know, again, I assume Pittsburgh Water, if they haven't, I'm sure Will would be happy to come in here and give a presentation to you. I've seen it about the rate increases, and it's standard. I mean, you can look and know the percentage increase that is coming in 2027 and 2028. And when you do that with assuming a $10 million bill in 2025, we know where those bills are headed.
And what would you anticipate like the 2027 bill be? I mean, I know you don't work for Pittsburgh Water.
No, no, of course. I would assume based on our estimates that it's going to be about $14.6 million, and it's currently budgeted at $8.5.
Wow, okay. That's, wow, that's a lot.
Yeah. And it's, I mean, it's the ugly reality, right? Like things, and we did not traditionally, I mean, to be fair, we have not, the city has not traditionally paid a water bill. This is a new, you know, and the council budget director can probably provide more context with that, but it is a new relationship. This is a new utility because of how our relationship is changing, but it is now something we are obligated to pay, and from my perspective, we would be wise to budget for it.
And then when we talk about, you know, additional, you know, revenue, one question that comes to mind that, you know, for me, we've, you know, discussed ad nauseam over the years about payments in lieu of taxes and things like that. Is there a particular number that you think would be sufficient?
Well.
That would, you know, given, you know, obviously, you know, it's not compulsory, but, you know, realistic number, but then also that would, you know, effectively address, you know, some of the challenges that we're having fiscally?
So, I'll share that the city of Philadelphia has a $7 billion operating budget, and they bring in $4 million a year in pilot payments. So, we need to have that conversation. That absolutely needs to be part of the revenue pie, if you will, but I think it is unrealistic to assume that voluntary payments alone will achieve balance with this budget.
Sure.
But I do believe that all of those things, you know, the city tightening its belt, you know, very likely a mileage increase, I, you know, I think is likely on the table, voluntary payments, payments in lieu of taxes, all of those things need to be on the table. And, you know, I think those conversations absolutely need to resume between the city and our large nonprofits.
Because I know like cities like Boston have been pretty successful, even though they never, because my understanding of Boston, you may know more, this is your wheelhouse, but I understand that they never really get to the number. I think there's like a wish list number that they have, and then they, you know, whether it's, you know, Harvard and the various big players, like never reached that number, but I think they get somewhere, I think, in the $30 million range, if I'm not mistaken.
Off the top of my head, I don't know exactly, but right now, the city gets effectively zero.
Right.
Because we've done nothing to negotiate or have that, have those conversations, and that, you know, that doesn't happen and originate in my office, but I would encourage the city to resume those conversations, and whatever needs to occur to start that process should have happened, you know, from my perspective, years ago, but it hasn't. We peaked with voluntary payments at around $7 million in 2007, and it was after the city had gone into Act 47. So, from my perspective, we would be well-suited to have that conversation now before we go into financial, you know, financial distress, which I, as I've said numerous times, we are not on the verge of, but, you know, what prompted that agreement was this, you know, basically financial calamity. And again, we are not near there, but from my perspective, we need to have, we need to resume those conversations because we have not been having them.
Yeah, and my final question is beyond a mileage increase. Do you see any other areas of potential additional revenue?
Yeah, we're, we're actually working with a group of Carnegie Mellon students right now. The final report is due to us in two weeks on unrealized revenue throughout the city. So, we will present that to council, but we need to do everything we can. So, whether it's, you know, places where we're not collecting revenue, whether it's the safe fire alarm in people's homes, that's, there's a $50 annual charge that we haven't really collected in earnest in years, but we need to do everything we can to make sure we're collecting all that revenue that's outstanding, that's just left on the table. So, we'll make sure that you get a copy of that report as well.
Thank you. That exhausts my questions. Madam Sharon, thank you. Madam comptroller.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmen. We've also been joined by Councilwoman Gross. I'll move next to Councilperson Sharland.
Good morning. Thank you guys for being here. So, first of all, want to state on the record how thankful I am for all of the work that your office does for us. We see a lot of things that are in headlines regularly. There's also a lot of work that you guys do that doesn't necessarily get the same attention, how important that is for us to do our jobs and for the city as a whole. I just want to really thank you for being a phenomenal partner in co-governance with us here. And, you know, very often, you know, I will be calling you just to say like, hey, what do you think about this? And sometimes you're like, hey, that's a big deal, and sometimes you're like, it's not that big of a deal. Jamie, same thing happens to you. I really do appreciate being able to have that relationship with your office because these are not things that we're necessarily experts in, and you guys are, and I really do appreciate that. One thing that I do, it's kind of come up in different ways as we were talking through this. You certify the revenue.
Yeah.
And now, you certify revenue for five years. We don't have you, and originally when I wrote that legislation, we talked about the idea of having you certify expenses. And what I was trying to accomplish in that legislation, I realized, was not, it was not how I wrote that, but I think now it's coming, becoming more apparent, and I don't know exactly how we do this, but I'm liking more and more the idea of having you certify some of the expenses, and the expenses that I'd like you to certify would be the expenses that we're obligated to pay, the things like the water bill, things like utilities, things, you know, union contract salaries, things that council can, you know, we can change what the budget's supposed to look like, the mayor can change what the budget's supposed to look like, but we are still going to spend X amount on water the next year. And that isn't really like, you know, we can, we can negotiate what we think that should be, but it really doesn't matter because the bill's still the bill. So, I'm curious if you have any thoughts on, you know, certifying some of these like obligated expenses, if you think that would be helpful in the future?
I'm looking at the solicitor for the comptroller's office, Namita. I don't, I do think it's important that council does retain the ownership of this, their duties in this process, but what I will tell you is, you know, as, as the next six weeks unfolds, we are happy to provide guidance and highlight our concerns, the water bill being one of them. I think electric is also a huge.
Electric bill is the same category as water, yeah.
And the electric, we've, I think, already surpassed.
Yeah, we're already over budget.
Yeah. So, Namita, I don't know if you have any statutory, is that the right word, concerns?
I'd want to look at it much more closely. What I will say, and this is something that Jamie had actually brought up, is there are certain expenses that JDE will pay regardless of whether or not there is an effective amount budgeted within them. So, they function as basically automatic payments, right? JDE will otherwise stop a payment if there's not enough in that line for salaries and utilities. Was there another one?
Those are the two.
Yeah. Those are two examples of ones that would get automatically paid, and therefore they're treated separately even within our accounting and accounts payable systems. I don't have a definitive answer for you at the moment about the legality of us certifying those classes of expenditures, but I will say that there's precedent for treating them differently.
And maybe that's a good place to start with those kind of expenditures, looking at them and saying like, we are going to pay this regardless of how we budget it, we will be paying this. I don't know. I think that might be a helpful way for us to try to, I mean, like I don't want to give the, you know, I don't want to give the comptroller's office like, you know, the ability to say like, are we going to pave streets this year? Or, you know, like, that's, that's for us to decide, but I do think it could be helpful to say like, these obligated payments, we need you guys to sign off on. Is this a thing that, are we actually putting enough money in this account? Things like the electric, things like water that we need to make sure we're paying appropriately. So, yeah, I think that, that kind of might be, I don't know if it's useful to do it this year, but I think it might be useful next year to start looking at that.
Yeah, we're happy to be helpful.
So, on to, you know, kind of the budget as a whole. You have done a very good job of sounding the alarm for a year and a half, two years now, letting us know that these are things to, you know, we need to start really taking seriously here. Some, in some ways, we've listened to that, in some ways, we have not. What, what are your biggest concerns right now as we're passing the budget? Like, what are the line items that you are really paying attention to?
I think utilities are a big issue, particularly water, but also the electric bill. Premium pay for fire and EMS. As the administration has noted, police overtime actually does often get to zero because they're so understaffed. So, there are other issues with overtime with police because it is a strain on their workforce, but financially, it does get to balance. And then the other thing is, as the city is evaluating its exposure to the facility usage fee result in September, I do think it is, there will likely be money that will need to be obligated, and again, that's in the court system and being handled by the solicitor's office, and we're not, we're not involved in that directly, but I will, I would, that is concerning to us, what we might have to pay back at some point.
So, and I didn't talk to you before I'm asking these questions, maybe I should have, but a question that came up this weekend, I was talking to someone who's paying attention to things closely, and they're much more involved in state politics, and they asked, you know, like, what is the gap on the city's end? What, how much money do we need to cut or need to raise in order to actually feel like this is comfortable here? What, if you were to ballpark that number, what do you think it is?
I mean, on those five areas, we've, over five years.
How about like one year? What do you?
Let me see if I can. I would say we, the other part of the conversation, and which is probably a part of your answer, is we also have a revenue problem. Part of it is we need a countywide reassessment. That needs to be part of this conversation, but I don't know that I have a dollar amount assigned to bring us up to where we need to be unless either of you have one you want to chime in with, but what I will tell you is that we need additional revenue next year to get to balance, period. We do need to demonstrate, from my perspective, some cost containment efforts, belt tightening, however you want to phrase it, and then in the long term, we need to figure out how to grow. So, those three things, and I know it's, you know, it's great talking points, but they are, for next year, we need more revenue to get to balance. And I think because of the timing, you know, the likely scenario is that it comes in the form of a mileage increase, and I think in terms of cost containment, you know, again, we're not a budgeting entity, but a lot of the solutions for that, given the narrow time window, are, you know, should we look at a pay freeze for non-union employees? What else can we do to make sure that we're not putting, making really hard decisions going into 2027?
I mean, I'm, I'm trying to answer this question in terms of like, it doesn't necessarily just have to be a mileage increase. It could also be layoffs, you know, if that's what we want to do. I'm not saying that we should. I'm not saying what we should do. I'm saying like, these are what we could do, that it could be layoffs. And, but I'm trying to figure out like, what is, what is the gap we're trying to, to really close before the end of the year? And I, I've got kind of an, kind of an idea, but I'd be curious to have further discussion with you on, on like, just how many.
Well, part of it is how much revenue can you bring in, and what is the mileage increase you're looking at? What does a non-union pay freeze look like? Like, is, you know, how much do you save if you, it's, you're freezing pay from '25 to '26? There are some CBAs that are being negotiated at this moment, so, you know, what the ultimate outcome of those negotiations is. So, I think that there are enough things in flux that you could figure out a way. I would hope that layoffs are not on the table for right now.
Me too.
Very candidly, I think that we can avoid that, but I do think that it is unrealistic that this budget going into 2026 will get to balance without additional revenue. I don't see a path forward.
All right, well, hopefully, we can work together and try to figure out where that gap is and, you know, what cost containment, what service cut, what revenue, additional revenue we need to do to get to that, but I think we need to figure out what that number is pretty, pretty quickly here. So, all right, Madam Sharon, that's enough for me, at least for this round.
Thank you. We have been joined by Councilmember Warwick, but we'll move next to Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Sharon. Glad to be here.
Good morning.
Good to see you all. Just had some questions about your budget here. So, sorry, I missed the first initial seven minutes of this meeting, but the, it says minus one position. Is that one position that is going away because of your decision, or is that just what was happening?
We liquidated it and reallocated the resources is probably the best way to describe that, elimination of that position.
Okay. And no capital projects. Were there ever capital projects at the comptroller's office? Is that ever a thing?
Not in recent memory.
Okay. We have auditing and accounting services and also professional services. What determines those two lines? Is that, I'm sorry, I guess I should ask the initial question. Do you make a budget request just like we do or any department does to the OMB?
We, we meet with OMB prior to the budget being presented. Our professional services request in the last two years has primarily gone to outside counsel. We were the entity that argued in court against the two BDS referendums, and that has cost us close to $150,000. And our, from my perspective, is that should have been handled in-house by the solicitor's office, and that was, that was determined to not be the case.
That seems more than this amount, though.
Yeah, we're still going to be paying that off next year.
So, that's what's factoring in these costs here?
Yes, yeah.
What was the case?
The BDS petition, the anti, the referendum.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, then, the auditing and accounting, what determines those lines for yourself or the OMB? Is this what you requested?
So, I can speak to what we pay out of those lines that, the big ones out of that is Open Book, which is where people can go, anyone, the public can go and look at some of the contracts and such, and Fiscal Focus is another program that we pay for out of our office, along with, I'm spacing on the Binkley?
Paffer.
And for us to produce the Paffer, which we did in three languages this year to get max exposure throughout the city. So, those are some of the things that get paid out of the accounting and auditing.
All right. What are some big audits coming up this year?
We are next, this week, or late, later, next, later this week, we will release an audit on the fleet, which will complement the post agenda that you hosted two or three weeks ago. We are continuing to do our annual review of the American Rescue Plan Trust Fund. We are doing a three, three department review of code violations that includes PLI, DPW, and DOMI. We're also doing a review of One Stop, and we're reviewing right now the Stormwater Management Trust Fund. So, those are one, are reports and audits. It'll come out probably within, hopefully, the first quarter of 2026.
Okay. And those are all audits that are done in-house?
Yes.
And then, or?
Yeah, they're all done in-house.
Okay. All right. And then, I did have some general questions about the budget, like, you know, the proposed budget, just like my colleagues have asked. I think I've heard some of, some of the answer and some of Councilperson Sharland's questions, but I just wanted to make sure I get the answers for myself like directly. So, I think what I really want to hone in on is the situation where it seems like your office, I've heard most city council talk about that the budget is, you know, that was sent over is unrealistic in terms of the numbers. And I know we've discussed this too, that just taking overtime pay, if you go back, you know, the average of three years, past three years, it's you know, the average of three years, past three years, it's drastically lower for overtime paying. Really, when you look at any department, any bureau. And I'm, just want to focus in on that. Are there any other projected numbers so, that we should be concerned about? Or just like, what, what is the, like, how far, like, how many, how many buckets are there where it's just, they're projections? And it's solely based on OMB and the administration come up with a projection?
Can you ask that a different way?
Well, you certify revenue.
Yeah.
And so then, like, fire, overtime, right? You're not certifying that.
No.
How many other?
We don't certify.
Categories are like that where you're not certifying?
We certify zero in the expenditure category. So what we did when we, and we only looked at five areas of concern. And there were things that we had just have been monitoring throughout the year. Overtime, we provide quarterly updates on. And what we did is just evaluated overtime of the last five years for the Fire Bureau and assumed that that trend would continue, 3% increase. And even if you do that, you can assume that we're under budget by $27 million in the Fire Bureau with overtime.
Yeah.
And what, you know, and the question is, what operational changes have been done to lower overtime and premium pay in the Fire Bureau? And if the answer is none, then our projections are very likely more accurate than the ones presented in the operating budget.
So how do we get these projections under wrap or whatever the, you know, however you say professionally? Because that's not saying it professionally. How would you get these, these, these overtime projections? Like, how in the future could council, how could this council, future councils, prevent what we believe are bogus numbers coming over?
Well, in some instances, like with police, because we're so understaffed in police. And again, I want to reiterate that the overtime numbers with police reflect a serious strain on the department. But you can look and review, because the budget itself presents 20, the 24 actual, 25 budget and 26 budget. And you can review and see, wow, that's really out of alignment compared to where we've been.
Right.
What is the, and the question becomes, what, what has been done? Or what has changed that will lead this number to being so far reduced? Like, why?
Yeah.
And so, you know, another place that we've looked is the judgments line within the Law Department. And they have, the budget for that for, over the course of the next five years is, I think they increased it for next year and then went back down. But if you look at the average and remove two bigs, even if you remove the two big settlements from the case that involved the death of Mr. Rogers, you, you still were under budget by probably a million dollars a year, looking at those averages. And that's just the reality of the city's operations.
So, but is it, is there an option in the future where just to even have a, a correct, a really, just to even have a coherent conversation about the budget between council and the mayor's office? Like, is there an opportunity in the future? I think, you know, Councilperson Sharlin alluded to it, like, to certify like overtime estimates? Like, this whole idea of estimates and how, you know, there could be an administration, whether it's this one or down the line, or maybe it's happened in the past, where it's totally, they lowball it so much. And then they just think like, well, we'll just leave it for the next administration or we'll just, you know, figure something out next year. That, that, no one will be aware of what the plan would be.
I am happy to be a resource as you're all figuring this out. And our office is more than happy to participate in any conversations. But yes, I mean, it's a significant issue. I mean, the EMS budget is the other strain on overtime. And a place where they, the, the administration has pointed to has been the part-time medics. We're going to hire part-time medics to alleviate overtime. But the part-time medics are not in the budget. So they were being hired, they were going to be hired to alleviate strain on, on the medics. But if you're not even hiring the part-time medics, it's very likely that the operational changes required will not be addressed.
You know, I asked that question and the, the answer was that the part-time medics will be paid out of a trust fund.
That's, was not my understanding through my conversation.
Yeah, no, I'm just, yeah. But is there, so directly the question is, is there something in the, like, could this council put together a resolution that requires the, the controller to certify these estimates?
Yeah. I mean, there's.
There's nothing preventing that, okay?
I don't, not to my awareness, no.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. Next up, we will take questions from Councilwoman Gross.
Madam Chair, I'm probably, I've got a bad connection. Would you mind taking some of my chambers? And I should be able to be in chambers in a matter of minutes.
Certainly, thank you. Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, thanks.
Morning.
Sorry I was late. I don't actually have any questions about your, your budget. Just sort of general and apologize if there's anything repetitive. But, so just, so the overall concern is not necessarily 2026. It is that we have under budgeted in the outgoing years in order to, to have a balanced budget in 2026.
I think we have done both. From my perspective, we have under budgeted in 2026 for expenses that we know we'll have. They include expenses with the water bill, fire overtime, EMS.
Utilities and premium pay.
Yeah, primarily. And that, that extrapolates through the next four, you know, the four years after. That creates a very challenging financial picture if you account for them without additional revenue.
Right, right, okay. So, okay, so I, I understand that. And we've, of course, talked quite a bit about, you know, we had a post agenda, different ways that we can increase revenue. Obviously, millage increase, you know, what various, what various levels of millage increase will, will provide the city? And also what that will mean, dollar for dollar for, for, for taxpayers, right? From the post agenda, just, just repeat it, that, you know, a 10%, I believe it was a 10% millage increase would be for the average Pittsburgher makes $72,000 a year and has $100,000 worth of, you know, of assessed property value. I believe it was like $130 a month from that post agenda, right? So, at any rate, I just, just wanted to put that out there, keep saying it. Okay, good. And, and I appreciate, by the way, your willingness to have these conversations and look at these numbers, right? Because it's, you know, it's, we, we have to talk about all of the things. Even though it is perhaps not politically expedient to do so. But actually, that's one thing that I wanted to bring up. So, so I know you've mentioned a number of times the, the need for a countywide reassessment, right? We obviously don't have any control over that here. I mean, not, not right now, but I, I think it would be prudent to consider, because of how politicized raising taxes always is, right? There is no elected official, it's like political suicide, right, to raise taxes. Everyone's going to be mad at you. Would be some type of, because we've seen, and we, we've seen it at the county and we've seen it here at the city, what happens when you don't raise taxes for?
13 years.
13, right, 10 years, 13 years, right? This is what happens is, is, you know, politicians get to say, hey, we didn't raise taxes. And then, you know, the, the government entities don't have the money they need to provide the services that people expect them to provide. So I, I would definitely be interested at some point in working with you about some type of, you know, obligatory millage increase at the city every, whatever, you know, periodically that we could, you know, maybe not do if there's some kind of boon in a given year, like ARPA funds or something like that. But that, but that would take the politics out of just simply increasing our revenues with the cost of, of everything, right? With the increasing costs of everything. So, okay, so I did, I do have a few questions, just more about, about the, the operations of the controllers. So, so when, when you all do an audit, so obviously like the, you know, waste, fraud and abuse, right? That's, that, that's what the audit process is about, right? And when you do audits, how do you decide what audits to do?
So we're required to be in every city department once every four years. And what that looks like is different depending on what we're reviewing, what comes across our desk. We will get inquiries from the public. Conversations at this table or from the mayor's office will spur an engagement in, in the form of an audit or in the form of a report. It really all depends. But if we have not been at a city department in the last four, five years, I mean, candidly, the number of auditors in our office has not changed in a very long time. So we do what we can. But the goal is to be in every city department once every four years. So that's, and that's in the Home Rule Charter.
And when you say in every city department, you mean just like an audit touching upon or like the whole department?
An audit touching upon.
Some function.
Yeah, so an audit of a full city department would be almost impossible, just given the scope and the amount of work and how long it would take, that the functions of, and the roles would shift during the scope and execution of an audit, that it, it almost would prove it to be not useful. So what we try to do is be as narrow and focused as possible. Like the, I don't know if you were here, when I mentioned, we're working right now on an audit of code violations and it's touching PLI, DPW and DOMI. But it's very narrowly focused on those code violations. So that counts, if you will, for all three departments. So it's, it's intended to demonstrate how the, this audit in particular, the inner workings of all three departments. And then we'll touch on various aspects of code violations more broadly.
Got it, got it. And when you're doing audits, how, how do you decide, like, the questions that you're going to address? Or sort of the, the details that you're going to hone in on?
Unless something has, like, transpired and there's, it's been in response to an event or an inquiry from this body or the mayor's office, the audit is very hands-off. I mean, I don't, until an audit is in its final format, I actually don't even see it. So I'm happy to have a briefing and if you want to touch on it from a CPA side of it.
So how a lot of audits is our chief internal audit officer and his team go through a lot of standards and policy. And they look at what is, if you're able to audit, what can you look at and how you can compare it? So that's how they tune in. They look at what they're looking at, look at policies, look at code, city code. And then they go off of, it's called the yellow book, which are government accountability standards for every audit, internal audit department, department within any government. They work off of those standards. So I know our chief internal audit officer goes through each audit throughout and at the end to compare with those standards, to make sure that we are keeping in line with everything.
Okay. All right, yeah, that, I mean, the reason I'm asking is that sometimes, and, and I know that it's, I mean, sort of like the ShotSpotter audit comes to mind, right? Where it's like, there's, sometimes there's questions that, that aren't able, that aren't answered in the audit. Do you know what I mean? But it, but I just wonder like if, and, and maybe that was, that was, we could have done a better job of sort of being like, this is the information that we're looking to get out of, right, this audit. So, I mean, it's useful, like, some of it is useful, but other parts of it, there's questions that are just kind of unanswered that we won't be able to answer when we get to the post agenda.
So we always welcome feedback and engagement from city councils. So absolutely ask more questions and that can be communicated to our auditors. There is information that because of the way ShotSpotter in particular remits data back to us, that there could have been, and I'm not sure exactly what the question is, but that information couldn't be presented in that way.
Right.
And that's super frustrating, but sometimes it's just impossible to answer the question that we're after. So it's, it becomes, how do we answer other questions that will inform what we're after?
Right. And that's also, I, I would presume like part of the audit. Like, we weren't able, like, based on the data provided, we weren't able to say.
We can't determine.
We can't determine, right, 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 okay. And then, as far as auditing, I, I wonder, so I know that we do a lot of audits of city departments. And this, the thing that kind of made me think of this was the audit, or I guess it wasn't actually an audit, but it was just the questions that arose around the, the TransDev, is that the, right, right? That came around about, about invoices and what those look like. Also, and I didn't get a chance to look at them super closely, but, you know, around the comp plan. And what is, like, what, when we are working with contractors, right, with non-city entities? And especially when there are ones that we work with a lot. I think that, and, and I, I realize like, we want to look at our own city departments, but I, I would be interested in, you know, whether it be someone that's doing a ton of, you know, has just been doing paving for us for a zillion years, right? Or that you, right, or, or, or whether it's a comp plan, you know, like, what are the details? And looking into those deep dive invoices, like, what are we getting for every dollar?
So we actually did our first review of another, of a contract comprehensively, I think it was last year, it was of Garland. And they're our roofing provider. And we, they have been, I think, probably for, I don't know, eight years. And we're required to buy Garland materials through that contract. So, I mean, there are, there were serious concerns I, that our office had with that agreement. And yes, so I am all, I, I think that's an excellent idea and it highlights concerns that, you know, the contracts are negotiated on behalf of the City Law Department. And our signature on a contract does not endorse the contract or the terms. It simply is a signature that the funds are available to pay the agreement. So from our perspective, we don't have the authority to hold up a contract because I don't like X, Y or Z thing. But what we can do, and what we did with the Garland agreement, was provide city council with the tools to understand when this contract comes before you the next time, to ask questions about the agreement, to expect more from that vendor and to ask questions during the council process of approval of that, of that contractor. And if there are ever any questions that anybody in this body, because you all see different city vendors and, you know, service providers that are, what have you, in your districts, we are happy to provide you with copies of payments, copies of invoices, copies of anything. Because again, it's publicly available. All of, Open Book has record of all of the payment. But right now, unfortunately, the platform doesn't allow you the check copies and the details. But it's public record and we will, we can usually pull a check copy in, I don't know, five minutes. So anything you want to see, just for record of what was done on a project, please just reach out to our office and we're always glad to provide it.
Yeah, I mean, I know that, you know, especially with sort of large scale, you know, whether it be a rec center rehab or a streets project or paving. You know, we do have these contractors that we work with all the time. And I know that, you know, you, you kind of get in a, in a cycle of using the same people. But I think it would be interesting to see, like, by contractor, like, just for example, how many, how many hit vehicles do we, you know what I mean? How many claims do we have from like this contractor or that contractor about like hit vehicles? Or how many overages do we have, you know, like on, on, on projects? Where it's like, you know, the bid came in and then the project went over? Or how many 3-1-1 complaints do we get about this contractor or that contractor? And I know that some, some of these, sometimes we're limited on who we can work with and that is an issue in government, right? We're kind of, our hands are tied, especially when you were looking at like buying equipment and things like that in public safety. I think it's a bit of a racket, right? They, they recognize that there's only a handful of providers. And so, you know, cities around the country are being charged a lot of money.
I was just gonna say, the international, and I think fires this week, and you should ask the chief, but the International Firefighters Union is actually engaged because the number of providers has consolidated and it's a monopoly. And they've all gone under like private equity. And now there are only two companies, I believe that's the number, two, that provide ladders and, I think it might be just ladder trucks. Yeah, but they, yeah, they've consolidated. It's a serious problem. Particularly when you look at the increase, I mean, we need ladder trucks, like there's no way around it. But when you look at the, how significantly the price of those vehicles has increased in the last five years, and then you look at the decline and the shrinkage, I guess, of the market, it's, yeah, it's not surprising, that's what happens.
Yeah, yeah, so, and anyway, and I recognize like, you know, nationally, that's, we can't, but I think locally, we probably have, you know, we can at least look at it, right? And sort of see, like make sure that the folks we are doing business with on a regular basis are, you know, doing the best job that they can do and the most efficient job they can do.
And we, I will also just, and I don't know if you were here for the inspections conversation, but we have a team, we have three, four inspectors who will go out and when an invoice comes down from DOMI or DPW or whatever the project is, they go out and they measure streets and they make sure that the work was done to the specs provided in the contract. So every project that happens in the city, we do review before paying the bill.
And I know too that we, I mean, you know, DOMI for example, right? Like we do go out and look and make sure that whatever, you know, whether it's PWSA, you know, even, you know, that the work is correct. However, if a street is paved, how long is it until, you know, there's like a pothole in the pavement? And I think that's the kind of thing that, you know, or how long till we're starting to get 3-1-1 requests? And I don't know, that feels like something that could, with the right questions would be, you know, to kind of see the quality of the work that's being done, long-term, you know? Okay. The other type of audit that I think would be interesting to see, and I guess I should ask if it's something that you have looked for, is like cross depart, because we, you know, we're talking about like ways to, and by the way, I don't, I never like having the conversation about eliminating positions. Rather, it's like, what can we do? Can we do more with the positions that we have, right? And in that, I wonder sometimes about cross-department redundancies, right? Where there's some, where there are two departments that may be kind of doing the same thing. And is there a way to streamline that so that, you know, maybe one person is doing that thing and the other person is then freed up to do something else? I don't know if that's something that you've looked at.
I don't know that we've specifically looked at it. Our office can't do any overlap just because of these, our duties are segregated intentionally to prevent anything.
Sure.
But I would be opening, open to doing something like that. I think the school district is a really good place to start with that conversation and the redundancy of positions there. But I, absolutely, I mean, I think that we need to look for savings anywhere we can at this point and that's certainly an option.
And I think it would be interesting too in like cross-governmental redundancies, right? Like if there are, you know, and I know it's harder because you don't have the same, you know, but if there were a way to work with like the county comptroller's office to kind of look together, like what is the county doing? What is the city doing? How could we streamline those things so that, you know, we really are providing quality, you know, and who's doing the best job at whatever it is, right? I know that there has been some conversations about, because I know that OCHS, for example, is doing, has done a really incredible job dealing with our unhoused population here in the city. And, you know, is there a way that that could be perhaps paid for in part by the county? Because actually it's a county service, but you know, if we have a team that is doing a really good job.
It reimbursable, yeah.
Right, you know, those kinds of things. And I'm sure that there are other areas, right? I know we talked about snow plowing with the municipalities, right? But.
Part of the CMU audit that we're, report that the students are working on is on unrealized revenue. And one thing that we encourage them to look at, and I have not seen a draft of the report yet, but is on grants and making sure that the city is maximizing the opportunity with state grants. And the OCHS reimbursement example is probably not a perfect one, but that, and looking for places where we can make up money in the state and with the state budget and state grants. And is there, are there things that we can change with OMB in allowing ourselves to maximize opportunities with grants? Because particularly for capital projects in the next five years, if we don't apply for every grant we can, we're not going to be able to do a lot. I mean, just looking at the capital budget, that's the honest to goodness answer. So we need to make sure that we're doing that. And again, if there are reimbursement opportunities, wherever they might be, at the county, state, maybe not the federal level right now, but, you know, we need to do that.
And then you mentioned PPS. Can you just describe again? Because I'm very interested in, I feel like the city and PPS, we have started to collaborate, you know, over the past few years in very positive ways with like safe passages, safe routes to school. We're starting a pilot program of providing after-school programming in PPS buildings. And that is a relationship that I think is very beneficial to the city as a whole. And so what is your role in, like what is your, what is the comptroller's oversight with PPS? And again, with this like ways that cross-governmental, you know, I'll let you answer that.
So I'll, I'm gonna let Namita, because Namita's really served as the liaison between our office and the school district. But our office is significantly smaller at the school district. So we have 57 people right now, or positions right now. Our office at the school district is six, seven, including the deputy school comptroller. We don't print the city, we don't have accounts payable. We don't have accounting. We countersign all school district contracts, which I will remind everyone, they are not online until we put them there. They're scanned in right now. The school district is still not using DocuSign, which is a, and so we are really trying to get the school district, you know, getting, putting more things in public. The fact that school district contracts were not online until January of last year, from my perspective, is totally and grossly irresponsible. And I'm proud of the work that our office has done to put that out there in public, make it public. But the report that we did, I'll highlight and then I'll pass it to Namita. Just, so our, the city of Pittsburgh has a very robust procurement office. And General Ziegler does a great job. And professional services are bid out, right? Pretty standard practice. At Pittsburgh Public Schools, they are not bid out because it is not required by Pennsylvania School Code. And 500 contracts from January of last year through August of this year, there were four matching RFPs with those contracts. There is money to be saved at Pittsburgh Public Schools by modernizing their procurement practices and adopting what Philadelphia Public Schools has done. Even doing what Philadelphia Public Schools has done with their procurement office, from my perspective, would save the district a lot of money year over year. From, and again, it's impossible to know, but from my perspective, would likely save enough to mitigate the other conversations that are going on in pursuit of cost savings measures. So Namita, do you want to chime in about any of the organizational PPS conversations?
Sure, so the comptroller serves also as the school comptroller. And as she mentioned, that's a significantly contracted role. The functions of that office, I think, are most limited by the fact that, as you all know, the state school audit office shut down a couple of years ago. And since then, it's been very, very difficult to get meaningful oversight of what's happening in Pennsylvania public schools. This is not just a Pittsburgh problem. Our office, unfortunately, hearing about all the audits that we have, I'm sure you've already realized, lacks the capacity to do that kind of in-depth auditing for the school district as well, right? First of all, our audit team is paid by the city. They're not paid by the school district. Only a portion of the comptroller's office comes from PPS. Any other engagement that our office has with PPS is because of our concern for city finances and how they are impacted by what's going on at the school district, right? And it's that way that we sort of justify it. But the school district is not paying for us to go in and perform these audit functions. They come from this realization of our interconnectedness. So I really want to emphasize that as well, that we do not have any capacity to do the level of auditing that's probably required right now at the school district. We really hope that the state considers reopening its school audit office to provide some of that oversight. But what we can do and what the school comptroller's office has been gracious enough to do with, again, their very, very small staff, is to engage in slightly more in-depth audits on things like P-cards. That is mandated in school district policy is something that we review regularly per school. The school comptroller's office goes in, checks their spending there, sees whether or not they're in compliance. Those reports are online, they're very brief and they're very limited, again, because of capacity. We're reviewing contracts very closely. We've started to engage more where we're seeing issues in contracts, particularly where contract costs are changing from agreement to agreement with the same contractor for the same service. And that's something that we've seen repeatedly at this point. There are points and there are places that we're poking in, but transparently, we need more staff and we need more help to be able to uplift some of this work meaningfully. I think that it's going to be a long-term process and I hope, to your point, that we continue to have good engagement between the city and the district. And I hope that there are more opportunities for the district to realize and rely on city models for how certain things have worked and how we've learned to optimize certain processes, right? By the nature of the staff that we have at the city. So I'm cautiously optimistic we can continue to move in that direction, but at the moment, we're just really capacity limited.
And so, so these six or seven folks, and I have to, I'm sorry for my eight-year-old. I just, anyway, if you know what, if you know what I mean. I just, I heard you say it, I was like, I have to. He would just, yeah, he'd be so disappointed if I didn't. Anyway, but for these six or seven folks, are we, we're paying for?
No, they're school district employees. So the only, a quarter of my salary comes from Pittsburgh Public Schools and I'm technically the school comptroller a quarter of the time and then the city comptroller 75% of the time. But their salaries are exclusively paid by the school district.
Okay, so, and have you had a chance to like present to the P? I mean, just because these school closures are coming and we are hearing so much about it and, you know, I mean, that RFP issue, that blew my mind when I read that.
They decided they wanted to hear from us in December. It's currently scheduled for review in December.
Great, great, okay. I don't think, the only last one in this is, and I actually have not heard too much about this. I heard a bit more when I first took office, but is just about that the time it takes for folks to get paid for that, you know what I mean, like checks to get cut? Is there, are there improvements that you all have been making on that or?
Often the delays are actually from within the departments. From a check arriving in our, or invoice arriving in our office to a check being cut is almost always less than, less than seven calendar days. If something needs to be inspected, there is a, you know, it does take a couple of extra days to send an inspector out to review and, review, inspect the work done. But primarily, what often happens is someone's waiting on an invoice and it's easier to just say it's the comptroller's office when the invoice hasn't made its way to our office. But the delays from our office are, an invoice is only held up if there is an issue with the work completed. Or we have a problem with the way the invoice came down or there's something wrong with it. If there's not anything wrong with the invoice, a check is cut almost always within seven days.
Okay, okay. I don't think I have any more questions. You know, I always appreciate, you're very quick to respond and, you know, help out. I appreciate the, all the work that your office does, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the comptroller's office. I will start off by affirming what Councilwoman Warwick says. I think you're one of the fastest to respond city departments. Not that you're, like, kind of a separate body of government, but honestly, you're very, very responsive staff and it really helps us do our jobs. And I appreciate the help as well, even for like forwarding constituent issues that were really, really important to respond to on a timely basis. So I really appreciate how quickly you are able to work. I do want to jump back a little bit to the overall city budget comments. We've spent a long time, this is the whole work of this table for the next month, so I won't hopefully take too much more time. But we spent some time in the meeting, I was able to listen in on the water bill, which is I think a great example of how we're over budget. So the mayor's budget is the proposed budget and city council has to pass a balanced budget by the end of December. It's our deadline in the Home Rule Charter. Our council budget office has told us it's $30 million out of whack. So, you know, it looks balanced in their budget proposal, but, you know, as we're beginning to have these conversations with each city department and with your office, we're thinking, it's actually 30 million out of whack. So there's 30 million we have to make up already. And I just want to, like bring up the water bill as an example and just so that members of the public understand, up until just a handful of years ago, the water bill for, you know, more than 100 years was zero. Because it was an internal city department and we make our own water and we send it out to fire hydrants, swimming pools and everybody's, you know, faucets. And it is been forced to be a fee-based service by the Pennsylvania Utility Commission, which we are the only municipal water authority in the state of Pennsylvania under the jurisdiction of the Pennsylvania Utility Commission. And that's because of legislation passed by the state government. Only PWSA, which is now calling themselves Pittsburgh Water. Only, this is the only authority. And so the PUC is in control of the rates, kind of erased the rates and then forced the rates to be applied to the city government. And so we have this bill. And I think what we didn't say in detail is, you know, what, what's being billed? So I think we should say that. And I'm not even sure if any of us know that exactly. So there's a lot of water used to fill swimming pools, for example. That much, I think, everyone can see, we all know that, right? And then the water to this building, like being able to flush toilets to our 300 or so city facilities or provide water there. You know, it's important to have, you know, we, employees being able to use the toilet, wash their hands, have potable water. We don't have potable water here. We actually buy separately jugs of water, for example, for this building, just FYI. And so what would happen, like, you know, in a household, citizens are like, just use less, do without, right? How would we cut the water bill?
Wouldn't, I mean, that's.
Because? So we know, we need to know where it's metered, right? And people will still say, like, you would do it at your own house, use less water. But, so what does that mean for the city government? I think it probably means, but I need someone, and this is a question, does it not mean not filling those pools with water? Our budget director is nodding yes.
Yeah, I mean, if the budget line is too low and you're not going to increase it, then the alternative is to close pools and spray parks.
Pools and spray parks, I don't think that's the only thing we're being billed for.
No, it's not.
I'm concerned that we're being billed for fire hydrants. Can you find out?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can work with Pittsburgh Water.
If we don't have enough money for our water bill, do fire hydrants not work?
So I just wanted to clarify, utilities are one of those things that we pay no matter what happens. Other lines get encumbered, right? Our contracts team goes, they sign off, they book a certain amount. Our contracts team goes, they sign off, they book a certain amount. When that amount is hit within our internal payment system, that's it.
I heard you say that earlier, but I don't actually think that's the answer to my question.
Okay.
Right? Unless council says, pay this bill over other ones.
Right.
Right? But if the cities, if there's no money in the bank account, which does happen, cash flow gets a little tight, right? I mean, we have a reserve fund, which is 10%, right? We'd like it to be higher, but it's down to 10, and that's one of the things we're a little stressed out about. Did I say that correctly?
If, if the current expenses that we know will hit over the course of the next five years were included in this budget, it would be far, it would be far, far below the 10% required.
Yeah. Right. So, I think we do, you know, we want to avoid a cash flow problem, right? But I just need the citizens to understand kind of why we're prioritizing things. And listen, you might pay the bill, but if we, if we have, in the past, right, there were 30 pools, and now there are not, right? And then, we had 18 pools, and then one summer, we didn't fill them all, right? And then, we didn't fill any of them, right, because of budget crunches. So, it is actually something that the city recently and regularly has done. No pool for you, no pool for you. Right? And so, that is one of the things that we're struggling with. I just want the citizens to understand that. And then, similarly, when we're talking about overtime pay, right, what people, what the citizens are concerned about is the response time when they call 911. You know, is it your ambulance, or someone else's ambulance, that has a slower response time, either because of staffing or vehicles? Right? That's the testimony that we heard when we were talking about vehicle expenditures, right? And so, that's, that's a kind of trade-off, right? And so, we, we're trying to create a budget that, when we say essential services, or we say operations, I just kind of want us to make the extra step to the citizens so they understand what that means. Right? So, you know, in the testimony for the last week or so, we've talked about, you know, operational capacity, or, you know, affecting level of service, but I want the citizens to understand the kinds of choices that we have to make to shave $30 million or more. I think we're still kind of, we're all of us looking more closely at this budget that we've only had for a week or so. And, or increasing that revenue. And it's a very tough, but it has to be done by the end of December. We can't pass, we can't pass this budget as is, because you've told us it's $30 million over budget, basically. Right? And so, we have to pass the budget that we believe in, and that's our responsibility to the public. And, you know, I see people saying, well, just, you know, shave, you know, shave jobs or whatever. But from what I understand so far, and again, we're all still looking at this more closely, all of the unhired positions have, were already cut before, before this document got to us. So, one example is that we've been repeatedly told and proud of, for example, the Office of Community Health and Safety, because it is literally saving lives. It has saved lives in my district of not just people outdoors or homeless, but people in their homes who were in need of service. And I have enthusiastic support from my neighborhoods for this office. But we were told that there were 12, and we're getting up to 15 social workers. Well, it turns out, right now, there's only six. And all of the other funding for those positions, we were trying, we really all believed that we were supposed to get to 15, well, that's, they're gone. There's no funding in the proposal. So, it's already cut the open positions, is what I think we're coming to understand in the last week or so, right? So, there's really only funding for six. And, and so, we all thought it was really important to have nine more. But if we add those nine positions backward, there's no money for that. And so, what do we do about that? And, and we haven't even found other places where that might also be true, where there was a capacity that everybody really, really thought was important, and that capacity was cut before it got here to our table. And so, I'm concerned that, you know, what the papers that we got were $30 million out of balance or more, but then there may have been capacities cut that we proposed to be cut that we didn't really all think should be cut. So, I really want people to understand that that, these cuts are going to affect them and their neighborhoods. Because people will lobby for their, the part of the budget they understand, or the part of the budget that they've paid attention to, or someone has told them about. But the reason we're having these budget hearings is so we can look at, and we do it every year, is so we can look at all of the places, so that we can weigh and hear from lots of different voices, and so we can have some collective consensus about what we prioritize. And we often say in each budget year that, you know, budgets are moral documents. It's true, but we also have to look at who's negatively impacted by the cuts in many different departments. So, there's that. I do want to point for the record, since I talked about PWSA earlier, that I'm holding a post agenda later today, and council is probably facing this Wednesday, the bill to approve the sale of the entire asset for $1 to the authority. And that heretofore, for more than 100 years, this body has owned the asset, and people have owned the asset, that is the water plant, that is 1,000 miles of water line, it's like the Highland Park reservoirs, the Landford reservoirs, 1,500 miles of sewer lines. And that in 1995, this body unfortunately approved a lease, saying, go ahead, this authority we've created, own and control, like, you know, hire people and have your own employees, but, you know, we still own the actual infrastructure. But in 19, or in 2025, you know, you can buy it for a dollar, which is the moment that we're now facing. And so, we'll be talking to other townships in Pennsylvania, some other Pennsylvania people who have been paying attention to how this has played out in other municipalities. And then, also, one of the commissioners in Gainesville, Florida, which is a body that the commissioners there just dissolved their water authority, to take back the employees as municipal employees, to take back the debt as municipal debt, the pensions as municipal pensions. And I think it's still playing out, but they recently had their vote, and so I wanted to hear about, like, why, why did they think that was so important? You know, they had an authority, why did, and it was a, it was a ballot initiative from citizens, I think. But we'll hear a little bit about that in that post agenda, it's at 3:30. And then, I'm sure we'll have more discussion on Wednesday about kind of what are the ramifications of the citizens and the city council not being in control of the fiscal assets is, again, the vote that's on the agenda for this Wednesday, I believe. So, I didn't give you a chance to respond to my, kind of like, I want us to understand, like, how, the task in front of us for the next six weeks. Did you have any?
No, I just, I mean, I, I think all of these things are moving pieces, and they're levers, basically, and, or, and we have to get to balance. And right now, this document is on, is balanced on paper only, and does not reflect the actual costs of running the city next year, or over the course of the next five years. And it's my hope that council recognizes the things that aren't accounted for in the budget itself, and makes those changes and gets to balance, so that the, because from my perspective, the city will be much healthier financially to do that.
Okay. I think that's all for me, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time today and for being here. I've had the pleasure of serving with you, all three of you, on this joint financial task force throughout the year, where many of these topics that we're wrestling with as council members now have come up again and again throughout the year, one of them being premium pay. To date, has anyone in your office received an answer as to why, why premium pay is the way, is as, you know, over budget as it is, or what measures have been taken operationally to rein it in in any department?
I don't want to speak further than that. No. No. And I, I think the administration has taken a, you know, it all comes out in the wash type of approach, and some of these lines do get to balance. We are, as I've mentioned, I think, two other times, the police are so understaffed that their overtime figures do get close to balance, because they are not spending money on bringing in new police officers, right? They have so few cops on the job that overtime gets to balance. But with fire, fire has, as of October, had 697 police officers, firefighters, 697 firefighters as of October, 20 more coming on, or graduating in December. So, we know that that is not a staffing issue. We're not going to get to balance on, on that, on that side of the ledger. And premium pay is still going to be, I don't know, $23 million for 2025. So, and the same is true with medics. We are moving into adequate staffing levels. We still don't have enough. I don't think we're budgeted for enough medics. But the staffing issue doesn't, it's not, it's not going to get to balance. And it all comes out in the wash, from my perspective, is not a great budgeting strategy.
Not to mention Public Works Administration and various bureaus within Public Works and others.
And I will mention, too, that we had a significant storm in April 28th, I think was the date, and that is a reason that you would assume that we need overtime, right? There was catastrophic event, public safety was out, public works was out. That is what overtime really should be for, is, you know, now, once-in-a-lifetime storms are happening once a year because of climate change. But that is what overtime really should be utilized for, not for day-to-day operations. And that is how, from my perspective, overtime and premium pay are being utilized right now in the budget.
Thanks. Another has been utilization of trust funds, and this came up a little bit with the Finance Department, but the point's been made by our own council budget office, others, that the use of some of our trust funds, VIBA, what are some of the other, that we have been relying on pretty heavily to maybe not supplement, but supplant our, like, basically used as revenue sources. Is there anything you have to say about that? Is that an area you've looked into? And if not, that's okay. I know that your, revenue is your chief concern, not budgeting and spending, but I didn't know if that was something that came up during these joint financial hearings that you wanted to comment on at all.
I don't have anything to say on that, other than we just need to make sure that we're bringing in enough revenue to cover operations of city government. Do the review.
Just as a counting, is, we have a couple of different types of versions of trust funds. We have trust funds that, like, we put money in, but we could also take out. VIBA is one that, once the money is in there, we cannot touch again. It is something that our office, the Accounting Department, has worked with OMB and payroll that, before, it was done on just kind of, how much do we think we're going to spend in a year, and then divide that by 12, and keep moving money over. And now, it's being done for healthcare, a little bit more true, so we can save a little bit more money on that, where it's not all going in there, and then we just can't get it back, is we're kind of waiting, putting more and more, now that it can be on Ceridian, our payroll platform, to save a little bit money. It's, so that's helpful. But, yeah, for a lot of our other trust funds, they're, we have a lot of things that we call trust funds. So, it's more of a, we'd have to look at almost each of them individually.
Mm-hmm. And so, you, and is there any limit to the types of trust funds that you're able to audit? Any trust fund? Okay. Great to know. You mentioned that your team regularly inspects engineering work, work done by DOMI, work done by Pittsburgh Water and its contractors. Does that at all extend to non-Pittsburgh Water contractors and their work with the co-op agreements with other utilities, like gas companies?
Unless it touches, and it comes through our office in the form of a DI, or we get a departmental invoice, or if we get a complaint, we will send somebody out, to the extent that we can, and we have the staffing available. But if the, if the invoice does not come through our office, or we haven't gotten a complaint, no, we wouldn't know, we wouldn't necessarily even know about the work.
Okay. I ask that only because we've seen in our office at least, this huge uptick in complaints with restoration, quality, timeliness, communication of some of the other utilities.
And we have gotten complaints. We have an outreach officer in our office now, and when we do get complaints, we will go out. A complaint came in that yielded awareness of a landslide in the south side slopes, and we had to move five gas meters, removed within five days of our office becoming aware of it. So, when we are notified, or if someone reaches out to our office, which sometimes people don't know where to go, we will go out and take a look at something, and we absolutely will inspect it.
Great to know. Lastly, we touched a little bit on the opportunity for partnerships, I don't know, other municipalities or other municipal entities. So, school, school district, county, and let's just call those shared services, right? Some number of years ago, the city and the county made the decision to combine 911 call center services. I don't know, it'd be interesting to know how much we saved over that period of time in redundant costs and operations, but I don't know what the number is. If you could choose, like, the top one or two opportunities for those shared services with any of those, especially those two entities that you might be aware of? County, I understand you might not be as aware of, school, district, for sure. What would be those opportunities above and beyond what I know that Councilmember Warwick mentioned?
I would like to look into a cost-benefit, a cost-benefit analysis of the garage between the city, the school district, the county, something, to see if we can achieve any savings with a shared agreement. We, TransDev is an exceptionally expensive vendor, but we, our vehicles are quite old, and that is a reason that we spend so much on vehicle maintenance. But I would be curious, A, how much the city saved in the long run, since closing the city garage in 2004, I think, 2005? And then, secondarily, what savings options are available? Those are extensive, it's a lot of research, particularly given the requirement we have to be in every city department once every four years. But that's something that I would like to look at, just because the two core functions that I think everybody at this table agrees with, you know, public safety and public works, to deliver both of those services, you need fleet. And from my perspective, if there's a way that we can save any money with those relationships, with the contractor, or even bringing them in-house, which seems unlikely, given the current financial situation we're in, I would be open to it.
That's helpful. I don't think I have any other questions. Does any other member have a question that popped up while we were discussing? Anything further that the Controller's Office would like to add that we haven't asked, that we should have? All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for your time. Thanks for being here. Thanks to my council colleagues for their great questions. And with that, I will take a motion to recess this meeting. Is there a second? We are recessed.
Thank you.